Agenda item 6B, Island Oasis Presentation. Mr. McCoy, you're up.
All right, good evening. So, it's December and we're going to talk about swimming pools. Okay, so, council may recall, last year, we went through a facility evaluation and master plan of Island Oasis Water Park. I think in the packets we sent out the entire master plan, we are, rest assured, we are not going to go through the entire master plan. Before I get started, though, I'd like to make an introduction. Jeremy Bachman's here, he's part of our team, and he's our recreation superintendent, and he's here to help me answer any hard questions. So, why are we bringing this up tonight? We're at a point where we'd like to get to the design phase of some improvements. Just going to bring it back in front of council, just for some quick review, but then also just trying to ask for some direction. We want to see what council supports as far as improvements to the water park. So, again, just a refresher, we did hire Waters Edge Aquatic Designers to do a study. They were to help us understand the current operating conditions, develop opportunities that will serve the community, and develop options that increase operational efficiency. Basically, what they did is they came in, they studied the facility, they evaluated the facility, reviewed our operating procedures, they looked at our demographics of the region, they compared us to our competition with other swimming pools, they held stakeholder meetings, and they did some surveys, and we came up with a plan or some recommendations. I'm not going to go through all the study, but some of the improvement options. They gave us three recommendations. They had some immediate improvements, some basic improvements, and some enhanced improvements. So, the immediate ones were some things that they thought we should do right away, we did those things. Then there was some basic improvements that they recommended, and they said the basic improvements would get us through for probably the next 20 years, but it was going to be a significant investment as well.
Can you interrupt? You've done all the immediate improvements already?
Immediate improvements have been done.
They're all done?
They've been done, correct. Correct. And then the enhanced improvements are some things that they recommended, they've recommended are maybe beyond what we have as a facility today, to maybe bring more visitors, bring a little more life back into, you know, make it more of an attraction again, as water park once was. Or, it still is an attraction, but it's, would bring some more new amenities. So, immediate improvements, there, that I just spoke about that were completed, there was just grates, like some of our pool grates were replaced, ADA chairs, replaced flow meters, pressure gauges, that type of thing, and those things were completed. Some of the basic improvements that they recommend, that's where we're at now today, is replace filters, again, some back, some backflow meters, pressure gauges, oh, I'm sorry, filters, concrete deck repair, replace the concession stand equipment, remove sand areas, some other repairs of the facility. So, the magnitude of cost for the basic repairs is 2.2 to 2.7 million dollars. And again, that will, in their recommendation and their evaluation, will get the water park to where it needs to be to function and serve well for the community for the next 20 years. Okay, so, here's where we get to the enhanced and significant improvements. And I'm just going to kind of jump right in to explain some of these improvements. If I can. So, in this general area here, which is now south of the existing building, they were recommending adding a splash pad for some of the younger families. This is some dry play area, like a putt-putt golf area. They were recommending splitting up the, if you're familiar with Island Oasis, we have, it's a, it's a large open body of water. What they were recommending was basically splitting the pool up into two separate areas. We'd have a children's, more of a children's play activity area here, and then also have a dedicated wave pool. And then, in the lazy river area, we'd keep the same lazy river, but we would make some enhancements, and we're going to kind of go through those just a little more. And then, to the north of the pool, they, they recommended adding, adding deep water, diving area, an area where they can do some climbing walls and that type of thing, and I'll just kind of go through that a little bit here. So, this is the children's area, adding some shade. This is a, basically a family slide over here, and just a lot of more interactive features.
Mr. Nickerson has a question.
I want to go back just to another slide there that you had. Where they recommended we split the water, I think that sounds like an interesting concept. Would we actually lose water capacity as far as how much water you actually have, or will it, you know what I'm trying to say? Do we actually lose the amount of body of waters?
We'll lose some space. We'll lose some, we'll lose some space, but really, we don't see that being an impact. I mean, we have a large, it's a large body of water there. The idea is that we, today, we don't do well at separating the kids' areas from the big kid areas, and this would help us do that. So, no, we're not concerned that we're going to go backwards as far as, you know, as having enough space for people, if that's the question.
Yeah, well, I didn't know, if you had enough water to accommodate what you want for the little ones versus the big, the answer sounds like it's yes, we probably have plenty.
That's, that's our thought, yes.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, we keep our splash pads open later in the season.
We do.
Then, so, how are you going to, are you going to fence off the splat?
So, that was actually the plan, so that we could fence off the area, so we could basically utilize it when the water park is closed, say, when we lose our, we lose our staff, right? And the, when school starts, we don't have the, a number of staff to keep the, the facility open, so we could keep the splash pad, the putt-putt golf area open, and it could be open for, say, during the state fair, you know, when, when, you know, there's a lot of, you know, demand for activities. So, it could be open later through Labor Day or what have you. So, again, that was the children's area. You'll see a picture here up to the upper right-hand corner of kind of the slide and some of the interactive features, of a photo of what the dedicated wave pool area would look like. Here's the, some of the enhancements they recommended, the lazy river, just, lazy river would be the same, except just adding these enhancements to give a little more of a, I guess, entertainment factor. Here's the, the deep well area with a diving board, there was a, well, you have a climbing wall here, and some, some lap lanes, and it would be zero depth as well. Today, we don't have deep water, if you're familiar with the water park, we don't have deep water at Island Oasis. Here's the splash pad area, putt-putt golf area, it's more of a dry play feature that we were, I guess, which was recommended. So, the magnitude of cost for the enhanced and, for the enhanced and significant features is 12 to 17.5 million dollars. So, they did do some projections for us. I'd be a little more conservative than what they have here, but they've, they said if we were to do the enhancements, we could see 450 to 620,000 dollars of revenue, expenditures up to 670,000 dollars, cost recovery would be 80 to 100 percent, attendance would be 80 to 100,000 annually. Right now, I think last summer, we had 42,000 swimmers at Island Oasis. We have had, when we were the only water park in the state, when we first opened, we, we were near that 100,000 mark. So, again, recommend, the recommendations they gave us was, we had, basically gave us three options, was to do the immediate, the immediate things, we did that already. Is number two is to do the, the basic improvements, and three is to do the enhanced improvements. And I'll, I'll say, as a staff, you know, we've, we've looked at this master plan several times. I think our recommendation from Parks and Recreation's staff is to do the majority of the enhanced improvements, with the exception of the deep water. We think that the deep water could probably wait, that'd be a $2 million, that's a $2 million improvement that we think would maybe, could be a later phase, so. But again, we'll take, that's why we're here tonight, we'd like just to get council's feedback and see what direction council would like to see us go, and, and our next step here would be probably go into some kind of a design, and then come back with council with, with some recommendations for a project.
I think the issue, you know, just for me is, you know, with the enhanced and significant, whether it really moves the needle that much on attendance. I mean, we're 42,000 a year, and, you know, the splash pad, are we going to charge for that? We don't charge for other splash pads.
No, the idea probably would be that it would be part of Island Oasis when you, during the summer, that it would be part of their admission, but then after the summer, it'd be some kind of a reduced price, or it could be a, it could be a, it just would, depend what we decide as far as an operating procedure, it could be a reduced fee, or, or no fee completely, it could be.
Mr. Nickerson?
I had four questions here tonight, I think you've answered most of them. First of all, what have we done? You talked about that, a lot of those we've done, a lot of them were safety concerns, too, so obviously, you want to attack those first. My next question was, what are the recommended next steps, and you showed us those. The third question is probably similar to the mayor's, you know, what's the biggest bang for the buck, is what I'm wondering. What, what really, and he called it move the needle, what, what really is going to draw people in? I don't know, you know, I think those are important things we have to identify, but you kind of skipped over the basics, 2.2 to 2.7 million. Those have not been done yet, or are yet to be done?
They have not been done yet, so that's...
So, that seems like, if you wanted, facility's going to operate for the next 20 years, that seems to be something you need to tackle.
Yeah, and, and let me explain that a little bit, too, and that's why we wanted to come tonight. Some of the things we do in the basic plan kind of depend on, if we're going to, if we're going to do the enhanced plan, we wouldn't want to do, we want to understand what we're going to, we'd want to understand that we're going to do the enhanced plan, because we'd have to rip out some of the basic plan, if that makes, if that makes sense. You could, you know, a filter might be a half a million dollars, but if it's not sized properly, because we're going to come back and do a new deep water pool, then we'd have to take it out and replace it. So, there's some, there's some efficiencies by understanding what we're, we're doing now.
Sure, that, that does make sense, and I'm glad that you're looking at it that way, too. So, Jeremy, are you out there quite a bit?
Yeah.
Can I ask you a couple of questions here? So, what's your thoughts about splitting the pools? What, is that something that you see, I'm just, because if you're part of this operation quite a bit, what do you see? Is that something that you think would be appealing, or do you think everybody in the same water is, is no big deal? What, what was your thoughts about that?
Oh, so, splitting the wave pool?
Yeah, where you have...
Yes. One of the main things, complaint is not a children's area, and you can see those complaints when people come in on Facebook, things like that. That's going to separate it, it's going to give us, just for the toddlers, and that's kind of where we're at with that. I think there's plenty of space over on the other side for the teenagers and anyone that wants to be in the wave pool, but we would, we would get rid of our floating logs and lily pads, which might upset some teenagers, but other than that, I think it's a good idea.
Any idea, when you look at the cost of this stuff, what would that entail? Just separating the two, because that seems like that's a good, common sense approach based on complaints and what people would like. That would be what we consider one of the enhanced programs, I'm assuming.
Right, right. I want to say, and I, and it's detailed in here, I would probably need to dig into the study, but I want to say it's on the, probably on the order of $2 million.
Get that all reconfigured the way you would want it?
Right.
And in that area in between, is that sandy area, or what, when you got the area between the two bodies of water, where people are kind of hanging out, what's, what is that? What is, what kind of surface is that going to be?
Are you saying...
Or you see seven, and all that, what's, is that just concrete?
Right out in here, that'll just...
No, between the two pools, between, what's all that in there?
Oh, right through here?
Yeah.
That'll be deck space.
That's concrete?
Concrete deck space with some shade umbrellas there.
Okay. Well, to me, you know, just off the top of my head, when you're looking at enhancements, that, based on feedback from consumers, it seems to me like that seems to make sense, along with the basic stuff that, while you're saying, let's look at what enhancements do we want, so we can decide what basic things we need to tackle. Then my, my last question will come to Patrick. And how much money do you think do we have to use? I mean, how much money is at our disposal, reasonable amount of money at our disposal with all the projects that we have going on, that we would even be able to dedicate to something like Island Oasis?
Depending on which program you go with.
True, but I mean, what, you, you have to have kind of an idea, do we have a couple million dollars to play with each year, or, when I say play with, to invest?
Well, I wouldn't go with each year, but yes, there's a $2 million in reserves you could use, yes.
Funding revenue that we have from food and beverage and those type of things, where we see that going up and that surplus, is there a possibility to use some of that, if needed, to help fund some of this? Or is that pretty well accounted for?
That's pretty well accounted for, right now, with all the different projects that Todd has. He's, he's tying up that money pretty well.
Okay. Well, for my two cents worth, I think, I like the idea of splitting the two bodies of water, or making two bodies of water, that, that solves a couple of things, one of the complaints that you get, and it also just makes that a little more unique here in Grand Island for that, to where everybody's not in the same water, fighting with the big kids and the little kids. And then, of course, tackling the basics, I mean, it's pretty important, things that are going to keep that thing operating for the next 20 years, the things that really make sense to tackle now, and then the other enhancements. I do like the idea of, you know, the dry area, but if you're looking at what do you do first, I think the two different bodies of water seems like a pretty good idea to start with, but that's just my opinion.
Just to add, I did look at, it looks like it was about two, their estimate was about 2.5 million dollars to, to, to break up that, break up the wave pool in the children's area. And, and circling back to your original question, what's, what makes the biggest impact, and kind of what Jeremy hit on, was I do think children's, probably one of our most immediate needs is, is dedicated children's areas.
And, what was my last question? I forgot my last question, but I think that pretty well, oh, this would be tackled during offseason more than likely?
Yes.
Can do that okay in the cooler months, well, obviously, fall, you can do it pretty easily.
Yeah, it really depends on what we do. If we go through the, the basic improvements, we would probably get, try to, try to, try to get after it after next swim season. If we, if the project is a little more large scale, we actually may try to get two more swim seasons in for the planning.
Mr. Stilt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have you done surveys to see what the people want, and then, have you looked at what brings people to your park? Why are they coming?
Yes, so that was part of the master plan, and, and I apologize, I kind of skipped, I skipped through that part of it, but they did do surveys. Some of the, the wave pool, the lazy river, the slides, some of the things you would expect are, are kind of the main attractions of the water park now, and, and it did show that children's play areas are kind of the thing that, that people would like to see, was kind of a weakness that, that showed up, but, and that was in the presentation from Waters Edge last year, and, and I didn't have those slides with me today, and I apologize.
Oh, that, that's fine, I, I read through that for the meeting, but, to do the enhanced part, the basic part is 2.2 to 2.7 million, but to do the enhanced, it really jumps from 12 million to 17 million. If you went to a bare bones enhanced, could you do it for like maybe 10 million?
Yes, I think we could pick and choose and try to, you know, scale back if we, if that's the way we would like to, yes, we would probably pick out some of the main features that we were, you know, think that are most important, you know, we've talked about the children's play areas, if we just did some dedicated children's play areas in addition, I think, yes, you could probably scale that, that number back.
I guess I'd want Patrick's blessing on this, because there are so many demands on the city, with the Platte River project going, and other projects in town, and other projects that you want to do. What would be a safe, what would you feel safe with us looking at? Would you bond it, or will we just try to pay for it every year?
Well, especially with the presentation preceding this, you would start have to lining up different projects, and that would, I think, be a study session or some sort of retreat for council to go through and start ranking projects. And at that point, then we figure out funding.
That's, that's my concern, is because I'm looking at all the projects that we got going, and you can't say yes to everything, because you're just, you're limited on budget, and you're limited on money.
I would agree with you.
Thank you.
It looks like two, in your diagram, two of the slides dead end. You have two going into the left side divided pool, and two slides, where do they go?
They just stop there, you basically stand up and walk away? You stop, and you just basically stop at the end of the slide?
Okay, they don't, they don't...
Yep, you just stand up and walk out, you don't, it doesn't take you into the water.
In the survey that was done, I mean, I'm getting back to the 42,000 visitors and the drop-off we've seen over the years. Do people mention that there's other water parks that just have more features such that ours is no longer fun?
No, I think it's, I mean, honestly, I think there, there are more options, you know, it's, and it is nice to go to the facility that is, is brand new, it's, it's new to try out. You know, in the water park industry, one of the things that they, they say is, you should try to update every three or four years, add something new, and that's what keeps your customers coming back. So, I think, I think that, you know, we, we have not been able to add new features in the last few years, so, so, I mean, there is probably a, you know, I've been there, I've done that, so, you know, they've, maybe go to another water park and try that out, but, I mean, again, 42,000 visitors is, it's still a pretty good crowd.
Past, we could, we could hit 100,000? How many years ago?
2000, 2002. That was the, that was the year that we, that was the last big upgrade we did, that was when we added the speed slides that year. Hastings was not in operation yet, and, yeah, it was, it was 120, we had 120,000 people go through that, that, the gates that, that year. And I will say, it was a little bit of a different time, you know, we were open until 10 o'clock, we stayed open later, we didn't have the issues with staffing that we do today, we were, we were open more hours, and, and, yeah, it was a little bit of a different time.
Plus, the other issue is the staffing to even operate an enhanced facility.
Yeah, so, we, that was one of the reasons why we, as a staff, looked at the improvement options and said that maybe the deep water could be a later phase. With what's in front of you tonight, without the deep water, we really wouldn't have to add staff. The only, the only situation we'd be adding staff is if we did add that deep water, then we'd have to bring some more lifeguards on, which would be, honestly, would be difficult right now. We, we did have a better summer this year with, with lifeguard staff, so hopefully, that trend will continue, but, yeah, that is, that is an issue, you have to...
Well, you and I toured some state parks last week, and, you know, Gaiman Parks told us that one of their limiting factors is staffing, so, everybody's in that boat, and I guess all you can do is hope it improves. Mr. Sheard?
Actually, Chuck's been trying to get his.
Oh.
Because it's not working.
Well, I'll, then I'll, I'll, okay. Mr. Hossi, I'm sorry, he didn't come up on the...
Thank you, Mayor. So, Todd, when the water park opened up, we were the leader, you know, in the state of doing something like this, and what we saw was 50 people a day at pure pool, and it increased to 2,000 people a day at the water park. So, in the 90s, we actually exceeded 120,000 by far, and, and our revenue certainly outpaced our expenses. And we did, we did improvement projects all along, from the slides, you know, like we did every three years or so, you know, and so, when we were a leader and, and nobody else had one of these, we were the place to be, you know, and so, it was, it was great. Well, since then, you know, you know, Wood River, Hastings, Aurora, you know, and I hear a lot of that, and, and the League Magazine, just in the one that just got to my door this week, talked about Gretna, just opened a $60 million water park, mile and a half next to Nebraska Crossings. You know, and I'm looking at those facilities, and I'm just wondering, the, the people that talk to me, they do go to Hastings, they do go to Wood River, they do go to Aurora, they might go to Star City Shores in Lincoln, you know, they might go to Gretna, I don't know how big that pattern is. I'm worried that we're, I don't know what we're building in the enhanced area that compares to the neighbors, to the features, because I think it is all about, where do you, where do you want to be in that market? And, you know, I, I think we, while everybody else was building up, we did nothing. You know, I, I see the immediate ones, and I'm glad they're all done. The basic ones all seem to be safety issues, I just, just normal maintenance issues, and I hope we get all the basic stuff done. In the enhanced stuff, I really would need to take a deeper dive on what the neighborhood looks like, and where do we really want to be, and, and do we really want to be there and market there, and, and can we be there with the labor issues? You know, having the investment in the facility won't do any good if we don't have the people to staff it. So, I think it really needs a, a deeper dive than what I've read, or we've been able to talk about so far. But I definitely think you need to do all of the, all of the basic things, no matter what we do with the enhanced. I, I wouldn't worry about if, if we enhance it, that something has to be redone, that'll just be part of the issue. Most of the, what I've read in the basic stuff really seemed to be just pretty much maintenance, you know, related or safety-related, and just really ought to have been done before. I, you know, I think that, you know, the kids' area is the one that I hear the most as to why people go somewhere else, so I, you know, that would just lead me to think that our kids' area really is the part that needs the biggest improvement, but even then, I don't know how competitive we can be with the, you know, with the choices that our citizens have. I know early on, we were bringing people in from every, you know, small community around here, and I don't know what that looks like today. You know, I don't know if our pull factor is even there anymore, and I don't know what our pull factor would be later. I like the presentation, I like the ideas, but what I really don't have a comfortable understanding is, even if we did the 12 to 17 million, what does that look like compared to the 60 million that Gretna just did? And I'm just going to, I'm not exactly sure, and I hear the, maybe staffing is an issue. I think we really need to take a look at this one.
Good, good feedback. Good, good feedback, you know, and I apologize, I, and I'm sure, I, I, well, I know I did not do the study justice by jumping to the improvement recommendations, but part of the study was to look at different facilities, part of the study was to ta, to take feedback from stakeholders, surveys, and this is what they came up with, so there was some, some, I guess, some thought process with these recommendations.
I expect the dates of operation will be for summer of 2024, starting and ending?
Uh, so, starting, we will probably start Memorial Day weekend and go to the middle of August, I'm looking over at Jeremy.
Second weekend of August.
Second weekend of August, usually when school starts, when we lose our staff.
Thank you, mainly I wanted Chuck to talk, but I do have another question, since you called on me. With some of the other things that aren't the water-related that you mentioned, like the dry land, is that what you call it, the putt-putt and things like that? You said that could go later into the year?
Could go, yes, could go later in the season, correct.
And you think that's something that, like, that doesn't fit into those timelines, could it just go until there's snow on the ground, or as long as you can staff it, that kind of thing?
Yeah, well, in fact, we've been keeping our splash pads open at Staley Park and the one at the Veterans Complex open till October.
Okay, so it really could be open during the fair?
Yeah, we could actually keep it open that long, and that was just one of the ideas that, that, well, came from the staff, and Jeremy was a, a big part of some of those recommendations, that, you know, we've just wanted to, you know, try to keep the facility open longer, and this was a way to, with minimal staff, or if any staff at all, to keep, you know, be able to offer something there.
Another thing that I think makes a difference, it doesn't make us look like we're a $60 million facility, but updating signage, updating kind of the, the grounds a little bit, you know, just the look and things, I don't know how that fits into this, I know there's some things listed that maybe qualifies that, you know, just that overall curb appeal can probably attract people as well, make us feel like we have something updated and special, is that something that you guys see regularly, or is that something that would take part of a $17 million plan?
So it's for the, so the, the basic improvements, like Chuck said, are just really gonna be non-cosmetic things, they're gonna be behind-the-scenes improvements, any of the, like separating the wave pool, the putt-putt golf, any slides, any enhancements at the lazy river, those would be the things that, like you said, would be the things that people would notice, for sure.
Cool.
Anything else for Mr. McCoy? Thank you, excellent presentation, I appreciate the update. Item 6C, creative district presentation. Please state your name.
Good evening, my name's Ryan Hand, and I've got some other people from our group here as well. Good news is, I'm not here to ask you for money tonight, so rest assured. Basically, we're looking for support as the Grand Island Creative District, you guys had some study materials ahead of time, but in a nutshell, the Grand Island Creative District, the goal of it is to bring Railside and 4th Street BID together, and make it into a creative district as a whole, so we can get more people into the Grand Island area from other cities, and really show off our diversity and what Grand Island has to offer. So far, we've done, we've got a little bit of funding from the CRA, and also got it matched by Peter Kibbutz Group, and we had a Mission Matters to facilitate a strategic plan meeting for us, so we got some ideas put together so that we can apply for the creative district accreditation. If we were to get the accreditation, we would get $10,000 right off the bat, then also, with that accreditation, we are good for five years with that accreditation, and we're allowed to apply for a quarter million dollars every year of grant money. Also with that accreditation, it also opens up many other doors for different grants we can apply for, so we're hoping to get the city's support for the creative district, so that we can really boost what's going on in Grand Island.
Nebraska Arts Council?
It is, correct.
And pay, four, uh, $4,000 a year, is that from the Nebraska Arts Council?
So the Nebraska Arts Council, initially, if we get accredited, we get $10,000 to be accredited, that's upfront 10,000, but every year, for the five years you're accredited, you are allowed to apply for a grant up, up to $250,000. And you can get, you can get re-accredited again after five years again, but it's a five-year accreditation.
And I just skimmed the, the program, but as I understand it, there is some reporting back as far as enhancing people coming into the creative arts district and...
Yep. Yeah, there's quite a bit of reporting, it's, uh, how many people are coming into your district, how much money they're spending in the district, just where they're coming from, there's, yeah, there's quite a bit of reporting, so...
Well, evidently, the Nebraska Arts Council wants to see that not only are you showcasing art and artistic endeavors, but it is serving as a draw for people.
Correct, yep, the, the goal is to draw more people to the area, and also show off what we have to offer. I think we have a very unique offering in Grand Island, because we have the Railside District and the 4th Street District, or BID, that is newly formed, and they both have great things to bring for each other, and I think it's a great match if we can make it work out.